So we have everyone except Laura and Jay Rafferty. Okay, thank you. If everyone would join me in rising for the Pledge of Legions.
Oh, this chair is my Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So welcome back, everyone. It's nice to be back at the table after having a month off. I wanted to refresh. I always like to start our meetings by reading the mission statement to remind us why we're all here in the work, the direction that we're taking. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. It's always nice when we have the Avon Achievers. It always blends beautifully. But the first meeting, obviously, we haven't started school yet. So next month, we'll look forward to having that as a part of the agenda as well. Let's keep moving right along. I have a motion to approve the board's minutes from June 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Houston moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie Alderweiler.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Communication from the public. Anyone who's here that wanted to speak to the board? Please come forward. Go to the table. Is the mic on, Eric? Do you know? Okay. If you wouldn't mind stating your name for us.
Sure. Yeah, this is our first time, so pardon any process concerns. But my name is Siddhartha Yenagu, and this is my wife Sahithi Raundla. We have a daughter, Sia Reddy, who's been going to the public schools since her, obviously, first grade. Now she's going into the sixth grade. But we pulled out of her from the public schools for certain reasons that we have experienced in her fifth grade. The first reason is Sia, and I'm sorry. I have three minutes. Is that the extent? Okay, I'll keep it short. So the first reason was Sia usually excels in math. She's taken a lot of competitive tests outside school, and she's scored like state rankings, so on and so forth. And she wasn't challenged enough at the class level, right? But we got to know that there is an advanced math course within the classrooms that they offer where they send students to a higher grade so that they can be challenged enough. Nobody has told us what the processes. They have selected a few students. And once we knew from those students that they were selected for advanced class, we basically inquired about it as to what the process is. We were made to run around between the principal's office and the superintendent's office with absolutely no explanation provided to us. After 30 days, I guess the superintendent's office came back to us and it said, all they said was there are certain data points that they use to identify students that are eligible for an advanced math class. And that was it. There was no proper explanation provided to us as to why only certain students were elected, what the data points were. And therefore, my child sort of, you know, felt that she missed going to advanced math. And again, throughout the year, she was not challenged at all despite us asking the teacher to give her, you know, additional math, whatever they could because she was not going to the advanced math classes. So that was first. The second one is inconsistencies in the curriculum that they use between classrooms. So I'll give you a quick example, and then I'll be done. Towards the end of the year, my daughter was given science, our social studies assignment, which in other classes, apparently, they've been doing social studies throughout the year. Except for in her class, she was asked to read up a big book, a big book of social studies, which was introduced to them the very first time and asked to finish reading and answering any assignments towards it within the two weeks period. The students, obviously, felt that, you know, they weren't given enough time to do their work. And most importantly, I think they didn't even understand the concepts of why they were doing this in a rush when asked to the teacher to explain further. Obviously, the year end was, the year was coming to an end. Some responses were given, and the students, obviously, didn't learn a lot about the social study. So I understand, while I understand every teacher has a unique way of teaching, all I expect is at least consistencies within the grade level so that every student gets the same curriculum. So that's all. Thank you. Sure.
Anyone else here for public comment? Keep moving. Thank you. The financial report. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you. This is always exciting for the business office to provide the final June 30th financial report for the prior fiscal year. I'm sorry that the finance committee doesn't see it prior to the board, but to spread the good news is always positive future, I think. To summarize, your financial report is on page 10. I believe that this is the first year since I've been here that we have given back the town such a miniscule amount of money. The total given back at June 30th was $408.26. So that was quite a feat. I have to give a lot of credit to the business office staff and our school staff for doing such a fantastic job during the purchasing season and staying on top of the vendors and what's coming in and what's valid and current. So that's fantastic news. I wanted to just hit the highlights of some of the things we were able to do at the end of the year and what the valid and current listing ended up being for fiscal year 1819. So there are 83 open purchase orders that meet the valid and current listing per standard. The total this year is $490,000 and change, which is substantially down from the year prior, about $500,000. The year prior, if you remember, we had some large, large projects that were being performed at the end of the year. So the prior fiscal year had just short of $1 million in opening conferences, which isn't typical. Just so you're aware, these are some of the items that we were able to accomplish. Of course, various classroom manager district-wide, which has been an annual purchasing, which by our schools, and we try to brand that where we can. Phase two of the interior and exterior shades, that project. Phase two of the RBS locker project. Again, second year. Those replacements were necessary. We're looking forward to the students saving them. New or partially replaced stage curtains in all the schools by AHS that has good working condition. So that's amazing. Those haven't been touched. We won't even talk about in how long. The new RBS intercom system, which was absolutely necessary. It was on its last leg. It really wasn't functioning to capacity. So RBS will again be feeling a really positive effect on their students and staff. The TBS projector system is being mounted in the gymnasium this week. They were the last school to not have a presentation system for large school events. So that's exciting. A new crew trailer, which was set to be in the budget for the upcoming year. We were able to do it at the end of fiscal year. Naturally, the fleet manager is very pleased to be decommissioning the current trailer. And this one is built to spec. So the team should be very pleased with that. And then finally, two new scoreboards at AMS. And TBS, the older ones were not repairable. We did have a company out to service them. Again, older, we didn't get the parts. So there are two new scoreboards.
AMS and TBS?
AMS and TBS.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Heather. That's excellent. Good work. Any other questions or comments by board members?
One question. How much was the amount actually set aside for special ed in our, I shouldn't phrase it this way, but our special fund?
SCR.
The SCR account?
Yes.
We put away just about $1 million this year. So I really thank the board for allowing that leverage there.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Ms. Shaw. Okay, committee and liaison reports. Since we didn't meet over the summer, is there any objection to just moving up to the chair's report unless anybody has something? Well, actually, Jason, you might have something to report on the field. But other than that, I'm not sure anybody else has anything.
Yeah, I could give you just a brief rundown. I mean, the field sort of pulling in speaks for itself. It obviously came a long way over the summer. It's supposed to be substantially complete next week, the 23rd of August. That's the plan. There was a building committee meeting last week where a few additions were recommended and subsequently approved by the town council. It's gonna be netting, running between the baseball field, the third baseline, and the track just as a safety measure. They're gonna put up some fencing around the porta potties to keep the neighbors happy. There were some complaints or some concerns about that. I know we had brought up the issue of installing some security cameras just so the police could keep an eye on the field on off hours. Think they requested it for two cameras, but the committee had some discussions, and the town council has approved, I believe, up to five with a cost of no more than $20,000. So those cameras should go in. And then there was one other, oh, item. Garbage receptacles, just to have her on the field. So those were all additional items that were recommended and approved, which I think are gonna be beneficial to us when the field is done. So again, we're really on track, and I think it looks great.
Maybe you know the answer, Dr. Carmonola. The security cameras in discussion, will they be, will we as the district have access to them or is it solely through the police department?
So I know for sure they were going to the police department, it looks like, looking at the superintendent. We also will have access.
In the same way, through the chair. In the same way that any of the current cameras, the police department can monitor them. There's an agreement in place between the district and the police department. But after hours, if there are alerts that there's movement and so on, the police department might directly monitor them because school's not in session.
Couple of questions. Do they also record sound?
The sound is turned off on our cameras.
Okay. And when you say...
On any that there were that it's disabled, I should say.
Okay, so it has the capability where we're not using it?
Some of the newer ones do, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Some of the newer ones do, is my understanding. But it's just, it's a disabled function from when it was installed.
I was referring to the new ones.
Yep.
Okay, so that will be disabled?
Yes.
And you mentioned that there are motion sensing technologies. Does that mean they'll record all the time or they're only gonna record when they sense something?
They all record based on motion and depending on how much traffic, foot traffic or otherwise, there is in an area, it just really depends on how long the recording is kept. So for example, you're talking about the front of the high school. That might be held, unless we pull the recording, it's held on to less time in the system than somewhere on a different server from a different camera where there's less movement. But yes, they all have motion sensing pieces.
Right, but you're saying...
That's how the recording turns on and starts.
You're saying they don't automatically record everything. They only record when they have a sensing?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the error rate on failure of the sense?
I don't know that tonight. I'd have to find that out from facilities. I haven't been asked that, to be honest with you.
My guess is usually, most people set it to record at all times. It just sets off an alert if it senses something. So I'm not sure if it's going to be actually done the way you described. So I might suggest that it should be done with a continuous recording and then just have flagged that there was sensing. Because that way, you won't have the problem of a failure to detect movement. You see what I mean?
I do.
For instance, you know, if it doesn't detect the fact that someone is being murdered on our football field and it doesn't turn on, it's a different result than if it, we catch it on film, but we have to go through and look at it to see where the murder occurred. I would think the second option would be better than the first.
All right. And so I'll just point back to some of the executive sessions we've had with the board and the town and the police department. I'm not at liberty to say publicly which ones record all the time and which ones are full of sensing. But your point is taken. It works both ways.
My suggestion was made to the police department and made an executive session. And I'm just asking the question now about these new cameras. And my suggestion would still remain the same.
Understood.
I don't even know who would know this, but is that, which budget is that coming out of? Is that the town? That's the town, that's part of this project?
It's part of the project.
That was added to the project through this process.
So it wouldn't impact our budget, but we would be in charge of the monitoring?
Paid from the red line of money.
Right.
I'm not sure that there's much, when you say in charge of monitoring, I'm not sure that's accurate. I think it goes to the police department, and they're in charge of the monitoring.
And I think the real concern is off hours, correct? I mean, that's really the concern for these cameras.
For monitoring, yes.
My concern is actually during school hours. That's why I asked whether we would have access to them.
Right.
Because we do have classes out there. We have students out there. And my initial concern was the individual student safety during the day.
And there's also a question of, and I assume it does, we would have night vision. Well, otherwise, you're gonna see nothing. And you're gonna have 12 hours a day that's black. And presumably, you would want...
That is a good point.
You would want it so you could see it. And I mean, at my house, I can tell you we have infrared floodlights. So it lights up really well.
And I know one of the building committee members, David Jevich, is in the field. There was a long discussion the last weeks being about these types of issues. I know he, some of his recommendations led to the idea of maybe getting a few more cameras, maybe upgrading what was first thoughts. So I suspect the discussion with the town and the board that we're all dealing with all those issues. There's knowledge on that committee to address those issues.
All right. Thank you very much. Am I missing, there weren't any other meetings that we need to report on?
I saw the Curriculum and Professional Practices meeting is September 3rd from 6:00 to 7:00 at Central Office. So I just wanted, it's gonna sneak up on us. I wanted to remind everybody.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Board of Finance did not meet in July. Their next meeting is on Monday, the 26th.
All right. Thank you. So for the chair's report, just welcome back, everyone. Hope you all had a rest this summer. Excited to start next week. We do have convocation happening on Monday at 10:30 here in the auditorium. I'm hoping that we have a good attendance by board members. So if you can just let me know if you're unable to make it, I'd appreciate that. And then we have to start school on Wednesday. And I think that's it for me. I just wish everybody well. It's a nice, healthy start to the school year. And I'm excited for what's to come. So I'll move forward to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Hiring report that came out in the packet. You see that we are, we worked in the summer to fill our open positions with retirements and some movement. We are starting fully staffed, just shy of a few. As we're going through some last minute paraprofessional hires, some teaching assistants. I think there's two that still need to be hired. And of course, our assistant principal at Avon Middle School. We're already back into that process. So other than that, we look good from hiring. That's been a lot of time and work as a whole on the team for the summer. So again, thanks to everyone who worked with us to make sure that we had all of these people in place to start the school year. You saw in our enrollment report, you see the numbers that I've been talking about for months with the registrations, particularly in the younger grades and kindergarten. As you know, we added in the kindergarten teachers and the fourth grade teacher that we put back because of the enrollment numbers that kept climbing up. And just as an example, we looked today before we came. Just since August 1st, we've had 70 new registrations. So that's how this has climbed to where you see it today. We're, right now, about two-plus over last year. So we've had to work to make sure that we had adequate staffing, rooms, furniture, so on, for the kindergarten in particular. But we are, we are ready to go. We did count for the majority of that in the budget that we had put together. We had to relocate some pieces here and there to make sure we didn't have classes of 28 kindergarteners at Pine Grove and also didn't move the space there at the school. But we have managed that.
I can just ask a question regarding enrollment. There's been a lot of discussion across town, knowing that there are a variety of new residential projects going on. Where are we overall district-wise in terms of our capacity to hold the student enrollment? Is there extra space for additional enrollment? I do know some people picked up on a reference you made back in May regarding the concern over the elementary schools. I just would like, if you can just address where we are overall capacity?
So Pine Grove specifically, there is no more capacity. We are at capacity. We have taken every space possible as we move into the new year to have student classrooms. Roaring Brook, we are utilizing every classroom. We're not quite at the capacity for student-teacher regular education classrooms. But as I have said before, and I have stated when asked about some of the projects in town, sometimes it's hard to predict from year to year what the enrollment might be based on the fact, as you say, how many, you know, more we had even moving to town, sales on homes and so forth. But if you were to ask me today if we could accommodate any more students in what is currently the Pine Grove District, the answer would be no.
What about the other schools in general? The district as a whole?
There is still capacity. We might have to do some redistricting.
Okay.
I think I had asked a similar question in the past. Is there a way to make this report reflect the capacities, percent capacity being used at each school? Is that something we could do or is it just not possible?
We could do that with a combination of looking at the square footage of rooms and what they're used for because there's some limitations. So a perfect example, I don't think a lot of people realize this. In kindergarten, for example, you have to keep their main classroom on the main floor because they have to be able to and have their own exit, way to an exit in an emergency, for example. So the pieces of it that we have to look carefully at before we talk about just capacity is, but what about what the rooms are? The size and the space and the area to do. So we have, Mr. Ultimus had started the process for exactly what you're talking about of a count of how many classrooms, spaces, based on the square footage throughout the district there are that could be used. They haven't totally completed that. We were, part of it was us trying to finish these moves at Pine Grove and determine what truly could be utilized, this classroom space. But I agree that that is a piece that we have to do.
If we could do that, it sounds like it'd be a useful piece of information to have.
We're going to have to do that because if we continue down the same path, we will have to look at redistricting, at least at the elementary schools, and/or utilizing our buildings differently. Because we are capacity at Pine Grove.
Thank you.
That doesn't mean we can't take one more student at Pine Grove. That's not what I mean. But what I mean is the classrooms are, there are no more classrooms to add.
50 students show up for kindergarten, we have a problem.
50 students show up for kindergarten, we have a problem. Yes. So hopefully, that's where we are at this point. Convocation, you've all received the invitation. We're doing it a little bit differently this year. We are having, it's Monday, the 26th, 10:30 to 11:30. We're hoping to start right on time so that we end on time and allow the rest of what we need to for buildings to open, our teacher work day, teacher's room setup, professional development that we need to take care of over those two days and also that we've already been carrying out this week. We've had new teacher orientation this week. We go through policies, procedures, district vision, mission goals, teacher evaluation, technology. Anything I missed?
Team training.
Team training, excuse me, for our new teachers. So we are already knee-deep, we're shoulder-deep, actually, in getting ready to open for convocation. Looking forward to that. I don't want to give too much else of it away because people are excited and have some exciting things planned. Trying to keep it student-centered. I would appreciate if you would let Shirley know if you're able to attend simply because we try to make sure that we have the right amount of seating and so on, both for our staff, the board, and any... We also invite our town council members and town manager and so on to come. So kind of like graduation, we're just looking for an RSVP if you're able to come. I understand it's 10:30 in the morning and folks have other jobs. That said, if you're able to come, Shirley would appreciate knowing by the end of the week. Right? So in terms of a couple of updates, I just want to speak to the, I know you're aware of this, but for the fact of public information, Power 10, you know, we have been, if you see the donation for the swingulator. We had many conversations at the board level before about our crew team and practice areas and so on. They will no longer be able to use Power 10 really because that is being dissolved as a business. So they are donating the swingulator to us and they are returning the ergometers that they had, 10 of the 18 that they had, to us. And we will work to have a spot here at the high school for them. The swingulator is set to go if we approve the donation in the garage bay that already has athletic equipment in it for the time being. And the ergometers will be stored here inside of the high school. Remind me where, Heather?
In the team room.
Thank you. In the team room. And we have exclusive use of the cafeteria certain hours of the day for the crew team, the coaches. And Mr. Phelan worked that out so they could bring out those ergometers and do the practices there. Also, I'd like to ask the board to remove the approval of the contract for the assistant superintendent from the consent calendar. Unfortunately, as you know, Dr. Rusak and I were working all summer trying to stagger when we were in the office also because of vacation and so on, trying to make sure someone was there. And we weren't able to finish resolving her contract And we weren't able to finish resolving her contract in time for it to be actually signed for tonight. So I would ask that you remove it before the consent calendar is voted on.
All right, so moving on to consent calendar. I'll make a motion to remove the assistant superintendent's contract. Do I have a second?
You don't need a motion, you just say you want to remove it.
Okay.
I would pull C, the human resources, because I'd just like to comment on that.
And that, otherwise, are we prepared to vote on consent calendar?
I always actually wanted to take off E and F as well, just because I think it warrants a conversation that I had with Ms. Rashad before we started the meeting, just to get it out and open.
Okay. So now we're moving to approve A, D, and G, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second to approve moving those four?
Second.
Second by Houston, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, sentience, okay. So now Houston?
Why don't I go first since I pulled the first? Roberto's contract has a arbitration clause in it, which I'm very much in favor of arbitration clauses. Regrettably, it looks as though to me that someone, and nothing that you did Roberto, played with the rules. So instead of using the commercial rules, it refers to the employment rules. That particular ADR Administrative Agency doesn't have employment rules. So I would suggest double checking that and making sure that when we do those sets of types of contracts, we should make sure that it refers to the commercial rules instead of the employment rules which are non-existent. And there are labor rules, but labor rules don't fit this. There's a difference between labor and employment.
I'm assuming these contracts have been reviewed by our own council?
Yes. The clause that Mr. Putnam Lowery's referring to is a clause that was added in, began being added into all the contracts. It mirrors one that has been the superintendent's contract sometime. That's not a standard, we all already know this, that is not a standard clause that the board council recommends putting in, but it is a clause that the board has accepted putting in as part of our deliberations. Houston is just telling us that he believes there's a piece of it that somehow has
Morfed.
morphed from what it originally was. I'm not certain about that as I sit here because I don't have the other one to compare it to. I didn't have the question until tonight. But we didn't purposely, I should say, change the contract.
Oh, no, I assume it's not purpose. Purpose will, there'll be no reason to do it personally.
It was copied and pasted from others and took it to it.
My guess is board council decided, oh, it shouldn't be this way and didn't make the check.
It's possible.
But it's, it's possible. And I wouldn't have drafted it that way because I know better.
And it's not an area of contention on the part of any of the employees, including the current contract talking about. So I don't see that we can't move forward with the contract and change the two words that we're talking about.
Correct, I just wanted to make sure that there was a public record that reflected it. And so that being the case, I would then make a motion to approve the contract as amended to reflect those change in rules.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, sentience?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining.
Just because I don't know if I fully understood what we just voted on.
Okay.
Because it sounds like in your motion, you amended the contract.
Quite, subject to of course in agreement.
And I just don't know if we have the authority to pass a contract amended. That's why I'm saying I don't fully understand what the motion was.
It was intended to approve the contract with a modification. And if the employee says I won't modify, that's fine. Then the contract can come back to us and we would then see it as being modified then.
We really, I guess what I understood you'd be saying is let's approve the contract and let them work it out, the council after, not really adding an amendment. Because I agree with you, that would be a problem.
I would be fine with that, I just, the way the motion was, it sounded like we were amending the contract.
We are not, I don't think, prepared here to amend anyways contract.
Not approving it as it currently sits.
So do you still abstain or do you have a comment?
Yeah, through the chair, I just want to be clear. I want the motion to be reflected clearly because what we can do is modify it, I would say as necessary, because I need to go back and make sure it looks the way it looks in the other contracts too, because I'm questioning.
I understand and I understand I'm relying upon my memory, but I have great faith in my memory.
So I know we just already took the vote, but I would be, for the record, I'd be more comfortable if the motion was to approve the contract and allow it to be modified if necessary. However necessary, I guess.
I would, I would say.
However necessary.
Then my vote would be no. So you still have someone voting no, so.
So we swap you for Jeff and then everything's good.
Everything's good.
You're taking abstain versus a no.
No, I get, I know, I'm not looking for the.
Is there any implications moving into next month? What are the implications for that?
Let's get his contract settled. I mean, this is, Houston's gonna vote, how Houston's gonna vote.
I just want to make sure it's done the right way, that's all I'm saying.
Right, I understand, I'm just, well, the motion was what the motion was. And my suggestion is we just move on and I'm happy with it.
I will do what we need to do according to that motion. And if there's something wrong with it, I will bring it back to you. How about that? Okay.
Okay. Sure.
So the vote?
I'll vote in favor of passage.
So change this to.
No.
Because we're sticking with Houston's motion.
Sticking with my motion.
Sticking with his motion. I'll do it.
I'm not going to be difficult.
If it is a problem, I'll bring it back.
Because it has nothing to do with the contract overall and the terms of it.
No.
And I just wanted to have a brief discussion on how these two contracts work, the direct group nutrition services and the assistant director. Just because I think in talking to Heather before the meeting, it has changed a little and because it's a shared service agreement, I just think we should just have the discussion of how the system works in terms of sharing the costs, if you don't mind Heather.
Absolutely, please.
It's a fair question and I really would love to bring to light the fact that Avon and Region 10 and Canton and now Litchfield have the only consortium model for nutrition services in the state that I know of. Avon is a founding member, it's five years now with Region 10. What we decided to do this past spring, when Litchfield was interested in coming on, was to reorganize the administration of that particular program. And we had been running it with a director, a part-time assistant director, and a clerical staff member, all employed by Region 10. Region 10 then billed based on enrollment, monthly each district as part of the consortium for the salary and benefits and other items via Litchfield and a cell phone related to those individuals. What the consensus was when Litchfield came on was that, you know, we thought we could be a little bit more efficient. As you know, it's been very difficult to stay afloat, for lack of a better term, with nutrition services. You know, we pretty much break even every district, every year. You know, the standards are very difficult and as salaries rise, our cost of food rises and of course we are not raising the lunch prices quite as quickly. It's just simply not fair. So when we reorganized, we decided Avon is the largest district out of the four enrollment wise. So it was smarter for us to bring on the director and reorganize that assistant director into a full-time position and then reduce that clerical position. Because that assistant director really was doing a fair amount of those clerical tasks anyway. The superintendents were kind enough to agree with the reorganization. So therefore, Avon then hired, if you will, those two particular positions. And we are now responsible for billing out in the same manner, based on enrollment every month, the other three districts and then bringing those funds in. So we maintain that consortium sharing of the expenditure for those particular roles. And of course, we also have some loss and benefits to go with it. We have purchasing power. We also have shared resources in substitutes and employees in a certain manner. We also share training. And then even sometimes at the end of the year, we share what's left of the food in everyone's freezers and refrigerators. We come together, we talk about what we have and all the menus are created based on what everyone has. We share the food amongst, now it's going to be four districts. And of course, we bill out accordingly. But it's an amazing model and it really does speak to some innovation on the part of these districts and leadership allowing us to have some freedom.
Thanks for the explanation.
Sorry, it's a little long.
No, no, that was perfect. I think it's important to get the details out there.
So Jason, would you like to move?
Yeah, I'm fine with approving both the contracts based upon that. I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. Second by Houston, all in favor?
Aye.
Sentience, it's all passed unanimously. Okay, on to new business. So we'll be discussing the lease purchase agreement for instructional computers. Who would like to speak to that? Okay, Ms. Rashad, you're up again.
Sorry, I'm going to be tired of hearing from you. Annually, you see one of these memos, at least for the last four years. This is the latest iteration of what the district has identified as the need to get us to that one-to-one model for our students as well as upgrade the technology for our faculty. This particular request is looking for 100 laptops. They are the same type as actually you see around you. The high school was the first to receive them on the faculty side. This will then provide those models to our elementary schools for a desperate need of upgrades at this point. It also funds an additional 500 Chromebooks, new models of course. And then that now saturates the district with that full one-to-one capacity, K through 12. Which is, oh, I'm sorry, 1 through 12, my fault. 1 through 12. The anticipated costs, as you know, you know, we do receive quotes. We do look through countless bids, specs, and national contracts to make sure that we're getting exactly what is that the district is looking to procure. The HP computers, we're really very pleased with their performance and therefore we're looking to continue that particular model. We're looking at going through a Trinity 3 technology, which has a national contract. And we have estimated quotes at this point, but they won't be finalized until after the board approves and of course it has to move through the town elected bodies as well. So that's pretty much the story.
Any questions?
Couple of questions if I could. What's the interest rate? Since it's a lease, technically it's an imputed interest rate.
The estimated lease when we received this was 6.79. But hopefully we'll do better like we did the last time, once it's finalized. It wasn't that much better, but it was better.
Okay. How is this going to work in terms of the assignment of the computers? Are they going to be assigned to schools? Are they get assigned to students and they move with students? Or they stay in the schools and the students move?
I'm going to have to defer to. Perfect, thank you.
Be sure.
You knew I was going to ask questions, don't I?
I know.
What we are doing is assigning them to students. So at Roaring Brook and Pine Grove, there will be, you know, number one will be assigned to Houston and Mrs. Smith's room. And that will be their computer. Same for Thompson Brook, they'll be assigned by student. The middle school will be assigned by team. And the high school will look at that assignment once we receive the computers up here. We're also pursuing and looking at the options of students 712, of being able to take their Chromebooks home with them. But we have to look into all the pieces that go with that. So that won't be probably this year, but that's our hope as we move forward. As the students move up to the next grade level at the elementary levels, they'll just get a new number of a Chromebook in that room. We won't be following them through.
Got it, thank you.
And we also, I just want to address kindergarten so people don't think that we forgot about the kindergartners. We have carts in kindergartens that they share amongst the rooms so they do have access to the Chromebooks also, just not a one-to-one piece.
Thank you, any other questions? So Ms. Rashad usually crafted this motion. Do you want us to simply move to approve?
Yes, please.
Okay, got it. Would you like me to craft something? So motion to approve the request to purchase 100 more laptops? Or do you want me to go with the most?
Just the lease purchase. That's what I'm looking for.
So down here.
The 279,000? Oh, no.
How about if I do it this way? Motion to approve the proposed lease purchase agreement for instructional computers as outlined on page 28 and is item number 19-20/08 on our agenda.
Okay, that's fine. Jeff, do I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sentience, casters. Thank you. All right, communication from board members, anyone else?
I wanted to say thank you for these chairs. I don't know who to thank.
They knew.
It's so very comfortable. And I can get out to the pledge without thinking I'm going to trip or anything. It's a, it's a, thank whoever did this, I am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, anyone else? Bogdan?
I only have four things, now five.
David, can you share the microphone, please? Thank you.
Now I have five because I just realized I haven't noticed the chairs. That's a good thing if you don't realize you're sitting on it, there's no pain. So that's the fifth one. First, I just wanted to thank the administration for all the work that goes on behind the scenes during the summer. As students, as parents of students, often we don't realize all the extra work that goes on. So appreciating that. The second item is, we had it as a standing agenda item to follow up on the strategic initiatives. So I don't know if it's a new school year and just kind of overturned over, so just a minor.
No, you know, I missed it in my update. That's what happened. I planned to do it on the update. That's what happened.
So is that something that we want to spike out separately going forward?
Yeah, I just planned to do it on the update and somehow I lost it. I'll speak after, okay.
And then we'll, but going forward, I'm saying we'll probably want to.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because I thought that was valuable, so I'm glad we did that.
Yeah.
The third item is, again, appreciating the parents who came today and spoke. I think the challenge of how we address those students who need additional academic challenges in whatever field they might need them has been a challenge, I don't think it's just for Avon. I think it's nationwide, maybe worldwide. And I know being, attending the board meetings five, six years ago, I remember hearing Houston talk about this and how do we address the needs of those students? I don't have solutions, I just, I've thought a lot about the challenges. I think part of the challenge is how we identify who needs that extra challenge. And I know there's been anecdotal things that I've been aware of from members of the community. So I think at some point, I guess anecdotal evidence becomes more of a statistic. So, you know, we talked a little bit about that. How do we figure out how much of a need there is, how much of a gap there is? It really, to me, comes down to the maximizing the potential that each student has. So that's, I think if we think about how much more students can do, it could be mine, Bogdan. So I really, I look forward to seeing solutions from our school district on that.
Bogdan, at the risk of interrupting you, is maybe we should ask the superintendent to update us on that monthly and see what they have come up with as suggestion.
Yeah, because that's part of that strategic initiative is this is a subset of that.
Yeah, so we just look forward to that being on the agenda next month.
And then any other comments from the house on that? The last point I wanted to make is, do we have, and I should probably know this, maybe I've forgotten, but for those students who leave our district, and I've been aware of a number of students not selected this year, to conduct any sort of post-interview or way to identify sort of the reasons why? Maybe that'll help with our continuous improvement plans going forward. So I don't know if we have a process or procedure for that, but with something valuable.
We did go through that a couple of years ago, I think two years ago. Anyway, I don't want to speak completely because I don't fully remember. My feeling was that I think the other superintendent had contacted by phone a lot of the families and it really, there wasn't really one single driver, was my understanding. I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but they did do that. And it seemed to be a plethora of different reasons that people were interested in private school.
So whatever that's worth. Again, I think it's a broader challenge. Maybe the biggest challenge in education, I would say, how do you differentiate appropriately?
Thank you, Bogdan. Any other board members? Anyone opposed to having Bridgette go back to giving her strategic?
I just threw the board chair. When everyone's, I'll respond. I didn't know if there were other.
Nope, I think we're all set.
Through the chair, as a ad hoc board member. We are actually tomorrow and Thursday, two full days, with our entire administrative team from central office and the schools. This is the second year in a row that, as you know, we're doing this, where we get together and work on our own professional development and the goals under the district improvement plan that then translate down into the school improvement plans. So as I told the board previously, we have a new draft of that to bring to you to the point that you were making regarding differentiation for our gifted talents of students, also for the other types of differentiation that we need because it is across the spectrum of all student needs that we are interested in serving. Those are, you'll see those are a piece of the goals. We talked about that up here, we haven't finalized those for some of the input from the administrative team yet. And then we'll work with you also as we did last year. Something else, to the point of the students disenrolling, they, as you know, parents do come in to gather records and disenroll, typically through our office as a whole, Shirley, but it could at times not be heard depending on if someone comes to get records and disenroll to go somewhere else on a day that Shirley's not there, it would be someone else in the office. I do get reports typically from the high schools every month if students withdraw or are placed somewhere else because there are pieces of that also, out placements that are done for student needs. I have spoken with, to the point you made, I've done the same practice of contacting parents of students I have seen on some of those reports. And I was with you. Our parents that are here this evening, I have never met that I, in this regard, have spoken to about that. So you did give, okay, information to Shirley. So I will continue to do that. Honestly, the majority that I have seen over the past year, we have had some leave to us to private. We've had a lot more students who have moved. So I have, obviously I haven't called students who have moved, but I will continue to do that. There's not, I guess what I would say is I can't insist that someone conduct an exit interview with me, so to speak. Some of the time they're, they just come in and do it and they leave. And then I try to follow up with a phone call if I'm made aware of it and go back to regular reports and at least continue attempting to contact people that have left. There are also times where they happen to come in and I'm there and I come out and have a conversation with somebody.
Are you aware of other districts having more robust surveying mechanism or contributing mechanism that we could look at adapting or modifying for our own needs?
No, I think for the most part, we all do it the same way. That we let parents know we'd like to know, but typically we're talking to them after the fact if they'll speak to us. And sometimes they've had a conversation with the building administrator first and they know and they'll let me know or not know. they know and they'll let me know or not know. Bottom line is, when I get the reports, I will continue to call folks that I'm told are leaving to go to private school. I don't think I always have a completely accurate report as to where they're leaving us for and that sometimes that's a little bit troublesome. We have to know they're enrolling in another school, they don't always end up enrolling in the other school that they say they are going to as they leave, if that makes sense, because a lot of times it's in June, for example, and something changes over the summer, some of them decide to come back, some of them go to a totally different school than we thought they were going to, but they then have their records. So some of it just is a little difficult to keep track of on our end.
And I would say conversely too, I think we have students that come back too from other schools.
Yeah, we got a number of them, that's part of the seven year registrations.
So I think that's also a good opportunity for us to find out what we do really really well, we're building on that too, I think. One other thing, just that I go to the, again, sorry, it's my seventh point. So I wanted to add, the kids who just finished freshman year in college, some that age, what I've always heard since we moved here two decades ago, that Avon prepares their students really, really well for college, as well as anywhere else. And so I kind of pick their brains, I've seen a few of them, they said the same thing, really well prepared for college, so I know we do that part really well. But I just think there's probably even more people.
Well, through the chair. I think there is, there is more that we can do. I think that that's part of why we have to have a district's approved plan, that speaking about differentiation for students at all levels, because we need to make sure that our students who are, the vast majority, not necessarily gifted and talented or in need of special services, the vast majority of our students are, have pathways also, and that's why we talk a lot about multiple pathways forward. But I don't think we're not speaking the same language, I just like to be clear that I think we need to do a great job of all the students. And many will go on, most will go on to some type of post-secondary education, but we do have students who will not, and I think we need to take a close look at what we do to prepare them for life beyond high school, no matter what it is they're doing. And that's so many conversations we've been having.
Thank you. All right, so I will move us to communication from the public. For those of you who have stayed with us, does anyone want to move forward and speak? All right, well, thank you for staying with us. We do have an executive session this evening, so I'm going to move us to executive session with a brief recess prior to, to allow people to exit and we are inviting in our superintendent and Ms. Mashad and Mr. Medic. Okay, so if we, at 7:55, motion to move to executive session, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.